Oops, it's not online. Commissioner Will?
Present.
And Chair Lockwood?
Present.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like Felicita is here. Looks like we have five in attendance today.
We have a quorum.
Yes.
Thank you. May we have the Director's Report, please?
Thank you, Chair Lockwood. My name is Erin Wardell. I'm the Assistant Director of Land Use and Transportation, and I have today's Director's Report, which is relatively brief. The Parking Reform Ordinance, Ordinance Number 903, which you'll have a work session on this afternoon, was filed last week, so you should have received a copy in your mailbox. Filing an ordinance means that we have drafted the Plan Language and Regulations, and they're now available for review. The staff report on this will be available to you a week before your first hearing on the items. Sometimes there are questions about why you're receiving the filed ordinance, but you don't yet have the staff report, so just know that that is on the way. I also wanted to let you know that last week we resent the notices for ordinances number 901 and 902, the Significant Natural Resources ordinances. We sent the re-notices because we wanted to revise the text to include information about when that staff report would be available. There's no change to the dates or any of the other content. We just wanted people to know when the staff report would be available. Just a reminder for everyone, when you're joining our PC meetings virtually, we do ask that you keep your camera on. It's important for maintaining transparency and so that members of the public and all of us know who's attending the meeting. So, for today's meeting, you have two work sessions for the two major topics you'll be considering through the next couple of months. We are going to hear a work session on Ordinance Number 903, the Parking Ordinance, and 901 and 902, Significant Natural Resources. For your upcoming meetings, on July 24th, you will have your first hearing on ordinances 901 and 902. For August 7th, you will have your first hearing on Ordinance 903. On August 21st, you'll have your second hearing on 901 and 902. If you need to have a third hearing, that will be on September 4th. And then on September 18th, you'll have your second hearing, if needed, on the Parking Ordinance. So you have a number of hearings coming up, quite a bit of content to review. We are planning that these hearings will take place in the auditorium, which is where our meeting is taking place right now, so you'll be used to being in this space. Sometimes we'll be moving in between the work session and the auditorium, so just know that if you show up for a meeting and we have to make a change, we will do proper signage around the building as we've done today. But for the hearings, we would really like to request Planning Commissioners attend in person. It's much easier, particularly when we have public comment before the Planning Commission to see, and have a better idea of what's happening in the room that way. Understanding, of course, sometimes things happen, and so people may need to join as a hybrid, but we hope that's everyone's second option. And that concludes the Director's Report.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from Ms. Wardell? Not seeing any. Thank you. So we'll move on to Public Communication, limited to items not on our agenda today. Has anyone signed up?
No, no one has signed up previously. Would anyone in the virtual audience or in the audience like to come forward? And by raising your hand and communicate with the Planning Commission on any non-agenda items? Looks like we have no virtual hands raised. You may proceed.
All right, our work sessions. And I've been advised that we're going to switch the order here and start with Ordinance Number 903.
Good afternoon. My name is CJ Doxy. I'm a Senior Planner with the Land Use and Transportation Department. Pull up my notes here, in case we need to go over anything. I will be providing a brief presentation on Ordinance Number 903. This is the Parking Reform Ordinance. The overview for this presentation is to touch a little bit on the background for where this ordinance is coming from and some of the work that's been done leading up to this. And then we'll talk on the proposed amendments. I've organized them into topic areas. There are five topic areas in total. And at any point, we can spend some time talking through those things. The goal here is for us to incorporate or take any feedback that we receive on these and use that as an opportunity to look at ways to improve the ordinance, if needed. And then we'll wrap it up with the staff recommendation, which will be fairly straightforward for this. So, going back to the origin of why we're here. The Governor signed an executive order in 2020 directing state agencies to update their regulations with an effort to reduce and regulate greenhouse gas emissions. And what that led to is the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking, which modified, in particular, the Transportation Planning Rule, Oregon Administrative Rules 660 Division 12. And this ordinance responds to the changes in the changes to the Transportation Planning Rule, the TPR. In particular, this ordinance responds to the parking-related changes associated with that. So what we have done so far is we've had one previous work session with the Planning Commission and a work session with the Board of Commissioners previously, where we shared information about the requirements and some initial recommendations from both of these bodies. And we've taken the feedback into account and put together what we have before you now, Ordinance Number 903. So, in terms of background, the Parking Reform Requirements, as they're written, are kind of phased into two different stages. The Stage 1, which we are implementing through directly applying state requirements, is to remove parking minimums for areas that are located within a certain distance of transit priority areas, so frequent bus service and transit rail stations. This map here shows those areas in yellow and blue, so we are currently not requiring any parking minimums in these areas. That went into effect January 1st of 2023. Other related requirements for this were we're no longer requiring minimum parking for certain types of uses related to low-density residential housing or affordable types of housing. The Ordinance Number 903 essentially goes a step further than that. The Phase 2 of this looks at a number of different topic areas related to parking mandates, parking lot design requirements, and other parking-related regulations. In particular, these areas are, the areas that are impacted by these parking regulations are shown in blue in this map here. These are the urban unincorporated areas of Washington County. So all the requirements in Ordinance 903 would essentially apply to only these blue areas here. It's important to note that the rural areas, areas outside the urban growth boundary, won't be impacted by these changes. So for those areas outside the urban growth boundary, it will essentially be the same set of standards, the same set of requirements that apply now will continue to apply moving forward. It's also important to note that the cities within the metro area, the areas shown in kind of a grayish-brown, are also subject to the same requirements. A number of cities have already made changes to comply with the Parking Reform requirements and the updated TPR. Some are in the process of doing so now. For any that haven't done it, like ourselves, haven't completed this yet, our deadline for getting these requirements is by the end of 2024. So with our schedule for adoption, we'll give ourselves, hopefully, plenty of time for that to be done. Our adoption target date is looking to be sometime in October or November, depending on if additional hearings are needed. So with that, I will jump into a summary of the changes in the ordinance amendment. The biggest one is the recommendation for repealing the minimum parking requirements. Again, this applies only to the urban unincorporated areas. And what this would essentially do is, as it stands right now, if you go in for a development, there is a table that has a list of uses to it, and there's a corresponding number of minimum parking spaces that you would be required to provide. That requirement would no longer apply to new development. But that's not to say that we, development, wouldn't be able to provide parking if should they choose to do so. The other aspect of the ordinance is changes to the maximum parking requirements. This is something that we currently regulate now through a combination of the Development Code and the Community Plan Maps. The Community Plan Maps set forth the areas, what were called Zone A and Zone B. And for each of those Zone A and Zone B requirements, there's a list of uses that set a maximum amount of parking that any development could provide on the site. The Zone A corresponds roughly to those transit proximate areas, similar to the map that I had shown with the orange and the blue areas. And the Zone B is anything outside of those within the metro area. Our recommendation is to remove and replace those with a single set of parking maximum standards. Those new standards would be largely based on the Zone A requirements. As they're written right now, there are some modifications that will be needed, which I'll highlight in a subsequent slide. And so what this means is that we would be removing the parking maximum references and maps from the community plans, and those are going to be Exhibits 2 through 12, which take up a good number of those exhibits. So in this slide here, this is an example of how the parking maximums are shown right now. The Zone A is the area shown in red. This is the Aloha area. And the areas in kind of a yellowish color are the Zone B. So our recommendation for this would be to essentially remove these maps. But in effect, what would happen is that red area would expand to basically all of the yellow areas. So any of those areas that is either red or yellow would have the same set of requirements. The reasoning for this is the state rules require a, the state rules are a little deliberate or a little detailed in terms of how to apply the transit proximate requirements. They detail out how you need to adopt a map, similar to what we have right now, that shows where these standards apply. But the TPR requirements go on to say that you need to update that map annually to reflect current services. These maps are based off of those services at the time that they were adopted. For us to do that on an annual basis would be a fairly time and resource-intensive process to do, just because an ordinance adoption, from a conservative standpoint, takes about four to six months to complete, from filing the ordinance to engrossing the ordinance. Four to six months provides, presents opportunities where we wouldn't be in compliance with those requirements. So by essentially expanding the areas to where those parking maximums would apply, we would exceed those requirements and no longer need to update these maps annually. In terms of the uses, I mentioned that we would be basing the, the recommendation is to base the uses off of Zone A. This table here and this slide highlights the uses that would be changed or added. So in a large part, a lot of the existing uses wouldn't be changed. The one exception to that is the, or the few exceptions is to establish parking maximums for multifamily development types, both studio and non-studio types of multifamily development. And then also to adjust the commercial and retail uses from 5.4 and 5.1 down to 5. So that's five spaces per every thousand square feet of floor area. It's a very minimal change overall. And then one other interesting aspect, I would say it's parking, related to parking maximums, but not exactly parking maximums, is a new requirement that sets a limitation on the size of parking areas for any uses that have more than 65,000 square feet of floor area. The surface parking area for those developments would be limited to a one-to-one ratio of that floor area. And that would be regardless of the number of spaces, but parking maximum requirements would still apply in those instances. So if you need to go, if you need to add parking beyond that one-to-one ratio, you can. It just means that you would need to do it through a parking structure, like an underground parking or an elevated parking structure along those lines. So with that, I'll take a quick pause, see if anyone has any questions. Okay, hearing none?
Commissioner Kaiser?
Just, can you clarify real quick for me? So we're talking about maximums here for commercial, retail, non-studio, and studio. So essentially, development application comes in, and you can set a maximum. You can't set a minimum. So essentially, we're just saying, hey, look, you can't do more than these, but you can do anything you want less than that. Is that accurate?
Correct, yes.
But then when we get to a 65,000-square-foot floor area type building, is it limited, when we say limited to one-to-one ratio, does that mean they have to provide one-to-one? Or is it zero-to-one, any ratio, anything in between there?
You could do anything up to that one-to-one ratio. So it could be a 0.5-to-1 ratio or any number in between. Your surface parking area, so for an example, if you were to develop 65,000-square-foot building area, your surface parking area could be no larger than 65,000 square feet.
Is, so I'm envisioning, you know, a large-scale apartment complex. It's got a maximum, but not a minimum. So if I want to maximize my unit count, I basically am making a market decision based on whether or not people will live there without parking, instead of mandating parking.
Yes, so the idea or the intent behind removing parking minimums is to, for it to become a market-driven resource, a market-driven supply. So it will be a developer's, it'll be up to a developer to determine what an appropriate amount of parking would be based off of whatever type of product that they're building. It wouldn't be us requiring it, but oftentimes there is still a demand for it. Garden-style apartments still have a need for parking. The fact that a lot of the development where these areas will be subject to are a little more suburban in nature and don't have the same sort of transit access or employment or retail access nearby. These are going to be still car-dependent areas, and it just comes down to a level of trust that development will provide these amenities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Just for clarity, we have Column 2, Zone A maximum to Zone A maximum. One is the current status, and the other is what you're proposing to change to.
Thank you, yes. The Column 2, Zone A maximum is a typo. That is the proposed. Yes, thank you.
I hope I make sense. So I just want to make sure I understand that, so new state law, we got to do this.
Yes.
And we're being a bit bold in saying no minimums. And part of the reason we're doing that is because it allows us not to be required to redo it every year. It's a big, it's a capacity issue in part.
For the parking maximums, yes. The parking maximums have the, have the transit area proximity requirement to them. So the requirement for that says, any development within half a mile of a frequent transit route or within three-quarters of a mile of a, or, yes, a max station, those areas would be subject to these parking maximum requirements. Part of the problem with the half-mile frequent bus service requirement is that services and routes change on, I wouldn't say a frequent basis, but often enough. TRIMET is very ambitious in terms of providing service to new areas and enhancing service on existing lines. So when they do that, we would be required to amend those maps.
That would be a new ordinance?
It would need to be an ordinance. The state language says they need to be adopted maps. And the way it's currently structured right now, with how we, how we have it, we have it in the community plans right now. So in order to maintain that, that type of framework moving forward, we would need to adopt, amend those maps or re-adopt those maps annually, based off of frequent transit service. The other possibility with that would be to apply it directly at the time of a development application. That is probably less preferred than the ordinance option, just because of the potential confusion in terms of applying it at the time, because transit service defining or having a map that can be used on a regular basis when an application comes in, it would have to be something that updates frequently or is coordinated with TRIMET and is communicated with applicants as they come in. And you could have potential confusion or discrepancies between when they come in for a pre-application to when they file. And for the purposes of this ordinance, we want to try and streamline the development proposals, development applications, and make it as easy and straightforward as possible.
I could add a little bit to that as well. It's not just that we have to update those maps periodically. It's that we would also have to implement a parking pricing program for the rest of unincorporated urban Washington County.
Now, yes, I think, to be clear, that's for the parking minimums.
Oh, right, the maximums.
Yes. So the parking minimums, to distinguish that from the parking maximums, the, and I'll go back to...
And part of the reason I'm clarifying this is because you said we're being bold. I actually don't think we're being bold with this ordinance. We're trying to do exactly what we have to do to comply with the state statutes.
Yeah. I'll, I'll touch on this a little bit. This is something that... So in terms of removing minimum parking requirements, the state affords us a fairly limited number of options in order to meet those requirements. The option which is being recommended for you now is to remove all minimum parking requirements. And that satisfies, that satisfies a set of TPR requirements. In lieu of that, if you don't want to remove minimum parking requirements, the TPR mandates that you establish new parking programs and new policies that regulate how you do, how you do parking. And there's still, even with those new parking programs and policies, you still have to remove your parking minimums for areas that are close to transit or a number of uses that go beyond just the low-density residential housing or affordable housing that we're currently applying through state law right now. I think the biggest reservation with approaching those other options is the concept of unbundling parking. Unbundling parking is a concept where you would separate the availability or the cost of providing parking from a multifamily development or a commercial establishment whereby if you were to, for example, rent an apartment, you would have the choice to rent a parking space separately from that apartment. The same thing would go for commercial leased spaces. If you lease a space, you would also lease any number of parking spaces for that. In theory, and, you know, in terms of externalizing the cost of these things or the potential of increasing the affordability of units, because if you don't want to pay for your parking, you don't have to. There's a lot of good intention behind it. The challenge comes down with implementing it because the state requirements will say that it applies retroactively. And by retroactively, it means that any and all developments will have to begin unbundling their parking. So that includes established multifamily residential developments, established commercial developments. It wouldn't be new ones, and then we would have to adopt a program to set parking rates for those, communicate that with all these organizations, and create an enforcement program for those groups or uses or developments that don't update their requirements or don't enforce their requirements. And given the constraints of the timeline that we have right now, getting something like that off the ground in a short amount of time is infeasible, to be honest. And I think the other reservation with it is, no other jurisdiction, to our knowledge, we've asked around quite a bit, is exploring that option. In particular, with the cities in Washington County, they're all communicated with us so far that they're intending to remove minimum parking requirements. So for the sake of consistency, we have that aspect going forward. And to kind of reiterate, you know, we want to create something that is streamlined and cost-effective for the county and for development. So hopefully that answers your question on it. I think that was probably a little long-winded, but I'm happy to...
That was helpful, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaiser? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Talking about uncoupling and the theory that you would charge people for parking separately, essentially, aren't we going to end up in the same spot? I mean, it may be take longer, but ultimately, if, like, over time, it's just a simple fact, when land costs more money, you need to develop more units in order to actually be able to pay for the land that you're using and actually make money. That means parking, which never has traditionally paid anything, becomes low-value. From that perspective, the only way to make it come back to have value, other than the market saying, I don't want to live somewhere where there's no parking, is to actually charge for that parking, which we already see in developments. I can tell you, I see it in developments down in, in Tanisborne, or in, not Tanisborne, but over by Intel, the, you know, the area I'm talking about. Anyway, they charge $100, $150 a spot for parking inside their, inside their facilities. So aren't we essentially getting to the same spot, just without administration?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a great observation, and I see it frequently in new residential, new multifamily residential developments, particularly when you're having to build some sort of structured parking, because that really increases the cost, and you need to recapture some of that. But I think the hesitation is applying that universally to all development would, would create a lot of, a lot of change. A lot of, a lot of places that don't do it now that are able to provide that parking for free would have to start charging for it. And hypothetically, they could reduce the prices of a unit and offset that by the cost of whatever they're charging for their parking spaces, but that could also not be the case, too.
And I think it's important to underscore, there's a difference between the private market determining that something is a good idea or something they need to do to make their development pencil out and us requiring it and then having to approach it from a regulatory framework. So what you're talking about is the market identifying they need to do something. They're allowed to do that if they want to.
Yes.
But we don't have to require it.
Would suggest that perhaps we ought to consider the second option and make this as complicated and miserable as possible so that it makes enough people upset that we actually go back to Salem and talk about this further. I, I think frankly, this is going to be a disaster. One way or the other, this is not going to work out well for people who live in Washington County or any other city. And so from my perspective, why are we trying to accommodate? Why not make it as difficult as possible? And let's see how it plays out with Salem.
Any other comments or questions at this point? Commissioner Rosenberg.
Should I wait until you finish the overall presentation for some historical background? Are we at the end of, of your summary today?
No, there's, there's still more, but I'm happy to field any questions if you...
My, my first question is, what prompted the implementation of minimum parking standards? Did we have an issue before when we didn't have a minimum?
I'm not sure I understand the question. If I, if I understand you correctly, before we had minimum requirements, what did we do? Well, I, I can say minimum requirements have been around for longer than I've been in the profession. I can't remember a time where there wasn't minimum requirements.
Okay. I'm, I'm just curious why we added them in. If something had gone wrong and there was a, an impact, so the minimums were added with a thought and an intention.
Right. So the, the minimum requirements, the concept of minimum parking requirements has been around for decades at this point. They, there's a lot of study, there's a lot of effort that goes into rightsizing those, and, and the county has done work to adjust or tweak those numbers to try and be responsive to what the demand is and not, not over-regulate it, not create a burden on those requirements. And we've adopted ordinances as recently as, I want to say, 2017 or 2018, when we, we looked at that most recently. So that is something that, as planners, as the Land Use and Transportation Department, those are things that we have looked at before. Moving forward, under this ordinance, we wouldn't be looking at those things, but we could look at other parking-related items.
Commissioner Will.
Thank you, Chair Lockwood. I just have a simple question, just to confirm. We're talking about parking minimums and maximums on-site.
Correct.
So any parking on a public street is not, you know, at all affected? So some, some developments are along collector streets where there's no on-street parking, and some developments are on local streets where there is on-street parking. And the amount of on-street parking available on a public street adjacent will not be a factor?
In, in terms of parking supply, I mean, the availability of on-street parking will be...
In terms of, in terms of requirements to, to be met as an application is, is submitted.
So you are, you have a little bit of precognition in terms of where we're, we're going with this. So the other aspect that this ordinance addresses or is proposing is Washington County does have on-street parking requirements, and this ordinance is proposing to remove those as well. Washington County is unique in that it's the only jurisdiction in the metro area and the only jurisdiction in the state of Oregon, to our knowledge, that has an on-street parking requirement. And to summarize that requirement, as it's written right now, is a single-family development, either attached or detached, is required to provide between one to two on-street parking spaces per dwelling unit. That variability between one to two is dependent on the number of parking spaces provided on-site. So if you are providing more parking spaces on-site, then you don't have to provide as many on-street parking spaces. The climate-friendly and equitable communities rule, rulemaking, the TPR, don't address on-street parking requirements. We believe that's because Washington County is unique and hasn't, us being the only jurisdiction to regulate that, it didn't warrant DLCD in the state to look at those sort of requirements. So what we're proposing is to remove these requirements to align with the intent of the rulemaking, align with the intent of the, the TPR, which is to minimize and reduce or remove your parking requirements or your regulations around parking mandates, mandating the number of parking spaces that are provided. I think one thing that's important to note about this is the middle housing is specifically exempted from this type of development. That was something that it was originally subject to. Middle housing was originally subject to these requirements, but the state essentially preempted us from requiring on-street parking requirements for those type of uses under their middle housing regulations under HB 2001. Essentially, it said you can't require more parking spaces for a middle housing development than you would require for a single-family residential development. And there are other related parking restrictions for middle housing along those lines right there. So by that alone, it essentially removed half of the types of uses that would be applicable to it. So by that measure, this is reducing it further, partially to reduce or streamline the complexity of requirements and make it easier for new development, new housing development to occur, recognizing that on-street parking is going to be, the, the demand for it is going to increase with the changes to parking regulations, or at least, you know, that'll be a, a growing factor moving forward. We do have a parking management program, the Neighborhood Streets Program. It is housed within our operations, operations department, and they will provide for neighborhoods that choose to or elect to, they will provide a parking permit program where if enough neighbors agree to join this, then they can get parking permits to basically park in their neighborhoods, and we would be able to enforce that. Part of what we're doing, is part of this ordinance, is kind of backing into a policy for our existing program by adding a, adding a strategy to the livability goal, goal three in the TSP, where we're recognizing Neighborhood Streets Program and providing it more policy support to continue to operate and to potentially grow as needs and changes, needs and demand change. With that, what questions do you folks have on that one?
Commissioner Kaiser.
The Neighborhood Streets Program, currently, how many, I mean, just off the top of your head, if you know, or if somebody knows, how, how many communities are, are utilizing that currently?
Not many. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. I would know, I do know that it's less than 10 right now.
So less than 10 communities in all of Washington County are using it. Do we think that's because of a lack of knowledge or because of a lack of interest? And when I say lack of knowledge, just, you know, people don't know about it, it hasn't been publicized enough, it hasn't been around long enough?
I, I mean, there's certainly some combination of both, but I can't say for which one is more prevalent. I, I can say that it is, it was in response to neighborhood, neighbors who wrote, raised concerns about overspill parking from, like, high schools or commercial areas that have parking going on in their neighborhood, or, or people who are commuting or dropping off at the Mac, parking and taking the Macs into work. It was intended to help provide some livability, address some livability issues caused by those type of things.
Do we, do we, I mean, what, how many people, you, you said it needs to reach a certain threshold before, before the program will kick. Does it have to be 50% of the residents of an area, or how, how do we determine what that is?
Yeah, so it is, I don't have an exact number off the top of my head. I could certainly get back to, get that information and get back to you on that. In, in lieu of that, I would, I would conjecture and say it's 65%, if I remember correctly.
65% of people have to actually sign a petition or call in, or how do, how do you determine that?
I, I'm not familiar with the details on the process, on how that goes about.
So just as a comment from my perspective, I, I applaud the idea of the Neighborhood Streets Program, and I applaud the idea of adding it and reinforcing its use. The truth is, parking is a huge issue. You know, I manage 125 HOAs. It's a huge issue in all of them. It doesn't matter which one it is. You wouldn't believe the number of them that can't believe that I can't police on-street parking, which, by the way, I want nothing to do with, but public street parking is a, already a controversial issue for a lot of these neighborhoods. We're just going to put more pressure on that and then hope that 65% of people, or 50% or whatever it is, complain enough to do a permit program? I mean, is that, that's, that's all we got? I, I'm not, and by the way, I think the county's doing fantastic work on this, but like, we're certainly not prepared for this. I don't know how you could be, frankly.
I just want to reiterate, complying with state law. We understand your frustration, we feel it, too. We're complying with what the state told us to do.
To, to that end, my, my only other thing I would say is, to what level of compliance do we need to be at? Because this doesn't seem like compliance, it seems like giving up.
This is compliance. This is what it looks like.
Commissioner Will.
Thank you, Chair Lockwood. I don't want to go backwards, but just confirming, so for on-site parking, so on the property of the proposed development, that we're getting rid of minimum parking standards?
Correct.
So, you know, depending on the use, might include access, you know, needs of disabled persons? And normally, if I'm not mistaken, like, the number of spaces allocated towards, you know, the handicap parking stalls, ADA accessible parking stalls, is usually a ratio of spaces provided. So in, in some cases, we're going to have zero spaces provided with a new building. So there'll be zero ADA spaces? Or, or will there actually be some minimum applied to ADA spaces?
You have some great insight in terms of where we're going to be leading to next in terms, in terms of some of our recommendations. Just as a quick spoiler alert, that is something that we have considered and are, have a proposal on how to address.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Thank you, Chair. My cast is about the Neighborhood Streets Program. Is this a self-sustaining program? You're saying there's maybe 10 communities in it. Is the cost to police those parking permits offset by the costs of tickets that have been issued? Because if we see a huge increase in the number of neighborhoods that opt in, is this going to cost the county?
It's a good question. I don't have that information available.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right. So another aspect, moving away from parking mandates, minimums and maximums, is parking lot design. When we came, when I came before you at the previous, previous planning commission, I think this is a, a topic area that probably had the greatest extent of changes from what we had initially talked about to where we are at right now. I think a lot of that was incorporating the feedback, the concerns and the reservations that we were hearing about the costs of some of the different options and alternatives. And with that in mind, we've streamlined, again, that's my key word for today's work session, streamlined the requirements as much as possible to what we consider the most cost-effective requirement out of the TPR mandates, out of the mandates that we're supposed to do. And so for this, the parking lot design, the requirement would be for any new or expanded surface parking areas over half an acre in size, those developments would be required to provide tree canopy that would cover 40% of the parking lot area within 15 years of planting. The benefit here is that the, this requirement satisfies multiple TPR requirements, multiple CFEQ requirements. And compared to the other options, it's certainly the most cost-effective there. The other options would have been to allow, as an option for a developer to, instead of providing 40% tree canopy, they could provide 30% tree canopy and enough solar panels to generate a certain capacity per parking space. By our rough estimates, that would cost about $1,200 per parking space to meet that solar requirement. The other option would be a fee and lieu requirement, which would be a new program that we could establish whereby you, you provide 30% tree canopy and then an additional $1,500 per space, fee and lieu to, that would be dedicated to supporting solar panels or, or wind energy generating developments. So there, we would either redistribute that locally or we would coordinate with the state, the, for a state-established program. In lieu of those, because of the cost of those different other options, we've chosen to, instead of doing a 30% plus an additional thing, just go with the 40% requirement.
I ask, so, do we have, excuse me, the options, the purpose of that is to equalize if you choose one or the other, or, you know, if you, if you, if trees don't work in your situation, then you still have a requirement and vice versa?
I think, I think the, the, the part that makes those options really difficult is the, the tree canopy requirement, there's a baseline to it. The baseline is 30%. So no matter what we do, we would still need to put in a 30% tree canopy requirement. Those other options are in lieu of doing an additional 10% tree canopy.
Commissioner Monty Blanco.
I just, I'm going to ask Lockwood a few questions so I can get it to understand. So let's see. We are required to do all this stuff with state law. So if I'm a developer, there's no minimum, if this ordinance passes, there's no minimum parking. If I were to provide parking, it needs to have these elements.
If you were to provide a parking lot that's bigger than half acre in size, yes. So to give you an idea of what a half acre is, I would, it's about 40 to 60 parking spaces, depending on design. So if you think about most standalone restaurants, they'll have a parking lot that is about that size. So like, like McDonald's or, or, I'm blanking on restaurants right now, but something along those lines, a standalone restaurant would have a parking lot that is about that size.
And something you said earlier sticking with me, that you were saying that Washington County is the only one that has the minimums or that has the maximums?
Washington County is the only one that has on-street parking requirements.
Other counties have figured this out?
No other jurisdiction has on-street requirements, to our knowledge. In terms of parking lot design, there's another requirement for additional coordination with the utility provider. For us, that's PGE. The idea being that if you're planting all these trees, you, we want to ensure that they're not interfering with any underground utilities. So the development requirement will ensure that as a development proposal comes through, they will have had an opportunity to coordinate with PGE to make sure that any planting that they're proposing isn't going to interfere with those things. they will have had an opportunity to coordinate with PGE to make sure that any planting that they're proposing isn't going to interfere with those things. I think that covers this. What, what questions do you have on parking lot design? All right.
You do? Okay.
I guess I'm thinking, so much of what we've read in the other ordinances are about trees, and specific trees. Does this have the same level of specificity?
No. So, the requirements are a little open-ended. At the moment, we're a little limited in terms of the level of expertise we have in-house when it comes to trees, arborists per se, or landscape architects. So, the way the requirements are written right now is to establish where these requirements apply, establish what the requirements are, what exemptions are allowed, and maybe, in terms of the, the, the plans that are provided or the development application that is submitted, we're going to require that a landscape architect provide a certif, a certified landscape architect provide an assurance through a stamp or an indication that the tree canopy plan or the landscape plan will meet this requirement. So, we'll leave it to certified professionals to make the judgment call on that, to keep it clear and objective.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Just real quick, the only thing, so you've got the development application, post-development application, you're going to get the parking lot developed. There's going to be a performance bond slash maintenance bond on that for probably a two-year period. Post that, what enforcement is there to make sure that the canopy still exists?
There isn't an enforcement for that.
So, basically, the rule is just aspirational beyond two years?
Yes. I mean, it, it is possible we could, for conditional uses, apply a condition to that effect, at which point we would be able to enforce it along those lines, but outside of that, we wouldn't have the capacity to enforce it. Which, yeah, for our purposes, there's been a lot of current requirements around parking, around landscape design, and we have existing parking lot landscape requirements. Establish minimum tree, I'm going to get the board wrong here, tree, like, tree planting wells, right? Establish minimum sizes for those tree planting wells. And the requirements, in terms of the guidelines, are you, are pointing towards best practices for well-known types of plantings, well-known types of landscape design. And so, the idea is that we're trying to set ourselves up for success by ensuring that these trees that do get planted will reach that maturity level without having to, without having to get to an enforcement point down the road. It's not to say that it'll be 100% successful, but it's, it's the tools that we have available to, to make sure that we're doing the best we can at the time a development application comes in.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Thank you, Chair. This might be a bit in the weeds, but in this particular county, there's a very complicated overlapping of telephone and data providers as well. PGE has abandoned a lot of their poles, and they're being used, the above-head lines are often not PGEs. Do the utilities have to be consulted, and do their lines have to be protected as well?
That's a good point. I'll double-check the lan, well, I could probably look it up pretty quickly, but the, the state language says utility providers, so we'll make sure that it, it is inclusive of all utility providers. But you're correct, like, there are other, other sources out there. PGE is the primary energy provider.
They put the poles up, but many of them have been abandoned since and taken over by a different provider.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. So, the last, the last topic is the ADA accessible parking. So, the Commissioner Will, I believe, as you had mentioned, that possibility, and, and that's a good observation there. Right now, ADA parking is regulated through our building code. It is a federal and state requirement. They're federally and state-regulated. And the minimum number of ADA parking spaces is determined based off of the number of parking spaces provided. So, and by removing parking mandates or parking minimums, it is theoretically possible to provide zero parking and not be subject to having to provide ADA accessible parking. Recognizing that this is an issue, that, you know, you certainly can have that potential outcome, we're recommending a ordinance that says if you provide zero parking spaces, you are required to provide at least one ADA space. And this would apply to larger uses. So, we didn't, we want to try and right-size this a little bit, without being overly onerous. So, we've connected these requirements to our existing drop-off and loading space requirements. Certain types of uses, the uses that are listed here, if you're doing a type that, that falls into a larger multifamily development, institutional uses, commercial uses over 5,000 square feet, or industrial uses over 25,000 square feet, those uses are required to provide one or more drop-off and loading spaces. Those requirements are still going to apply with all the other changes. Nothing's going to change with those. But in an instance where a use does have to provide a drop-off or loading space, and for whatever reason they decide that they don't need parking, there's no parking demand for it otherwise, the requirements, as they're proposed right now, would still require an ADA parking space. Our thinking is that we don't want to burden smaller uses with this requirement. It could be a little, little onerous for smaller commercial uses, smaller businesses, that sort of thing. And for uses that are providing these drop-off and loading spaces, they're already having to provide some amount of circulation onsite for, for the, the trucks or the, the vehicles that are doing these. So, it would be cost-effective, or, or that, a minimal increased cost to provide that ADA parking space. If they do provide parking, for whatever reason, they're, feel there's a need for it, then they would still need to provide an ADA parking spaces, because our building code would still be in effect. As soon as you provide one off-street parking space going on up, you're required to provide an ADA space. So, with that, what questions do you folks have?
Commissioner Monty Blanco.
This one's really interesting, because a couple of things are coming up for me. Because I, my, my understanding is that the intent of this law is to build more housing. We are in a housing crisis. And I, we also just had the largest disabling event in the world's history with the pandemic. Can you help me understand, if someone is disabled and needs parking in their neighborhood, like, what their options would be if that developer chose not to offer parking? Could they get an off, off-street parking spot, even if they didn't own the house in front of it? Like, what are their options?
Right. So, the ADA accessible requirements, as they're written right now, or as they're applied right now, only apply to sites, right? There, there, if you were providing, if you were doing a development and you're providing parking, then you're required to provide an ADA space with it. That won't change. If there are developments that build a, a building, a multifamily building or a commercial building, and don't provide parking, and, and they're not subject, they, they fall under these sort of requirements, that is, well, that's an area that we're not addressing at this point. We don't have the capacity, or, or we don't have a, a structure or framework in place to establish on-street ADA parking spaces. Part of the, we explored that a little bit, and part of the, part of the challenge with that is if you're going to be establishing on-street ADA parking spaces, you have to make sure that the, the street facility and the structures, or, or the buildings at that street service are all ADA accessible. You can't have a part of it that isn't. And that creates additional costs, which are certainly worthy of attention, but something that we aren't considering as part of this.
To, to me, when I, I read this and I think about the impact, I guess I'm really struggling with the, the intent of this bill, the intent of this law, and who it's supposed to benefit, and the crisis it's supposed to address, and what this, how, how it's played out. So, to me, it's a big red flag, and I'm going to digest that and come with more questions. Thank you.
Yeah. So, if I understand you correctly, your concern is that some places won't provide parking and won't have to provide ADA spaces?
Yeah, that's, to me, that's pretty concerning.
Yeah.
And I, I fully understand that there's, there's also the market and responding to the market, and what it means for a developer to simply not provide parking, and how that makes their apartment more and more, or less and less desirable, I suppose, depending upon the, the tenant. I, I guess I'm just, I'm struggling with this.
Right. So, this is something that we've had a lot of discussion internally about in terms of right-sizing it, right? I can't say that this isn't a TPR requirement. This isn't a CPEC requirement. This is something that only one other jurisdiction, to our knowledge, is doing something similar to this. I believe that's Albany, City of Albany. And the, there's a couple of different approaches that you could do to establishing this sort of requirement. Albany's approach is to apply it to their downtown area. So, for Albany, they've got down zones that are downtown-specific, downtown commercial, downtown residential type of zones, or they've got a district for downtown area, where they're applying this type of requirement. We don't have something along those lines, not, not clear-defined downtown boundaries where we could apply it. So, barring that, we would either need to, if we were to borrow that approach or adapt that approach, we would need to establish areas where it would apply, and something that, you know, we, we could look at down the road. Another approach would be just to be applying it universally. If you're not providing any, any parking, you could, we could potentially say you still need to provide an ADA space. The concern with that is, for smaller business, and businesses in particular, especially ones that don't have a lot of site capacity, it, it will become a preventative barrier to development, because they would need to develop a curb access, they would need to develop a drive aisle, they would need to dedicate a certain amount of their site towards serving, servicing a single ADA space. And that was, that was something that, given the trade-offs, we felt didn't, didn't warrant that level of regulation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm wondering if, from what you're saying, that there isn't enough data yet to know what's the best approach, or?
There's, there's no best practices in terms of how to regulate it along these lines. In terms of, in terms of requiring ADA parking without, in, in situations where no parking is provided, it's a little bit of uncharted territory. So, yes, we don't have data on it, yes. All right. So, I think with that, we'll move on to the, the recommendations, and really, this is just a recap of the, the topics that we talked on. And this is something that, as of now, this is something we'll be planning to come before the planning commission, before, before you folks, in August, with the, these recommendations, as, as we've discussed them. Certainly, this is a, a work session. This is our opportunity to, to adjust these things as needed. Right now, our recommendations, to summarize, would be to remove minimum parking requirements for urban unincorporated areas. It would be to essentially amend and expand where parking maximum requirements apply, and adjust the parking maximums for a limited number of uses, multifamily residential, commercial, and larger uses over 65,000 square feet. Would be to remove the on-street parking requirements. It would be to add a 40% minimum tree canopy landscape requirement for larger parking lots, parking lots over half acre of size. And then to add an ADA accessible parking requirement for larger uses.
And just to repeat, on the tree canopy requirement?
Yes.
You can substitute solar panels?
So, that was something that we considered, but chose, elected not to do based off of concerns that we've heard about the cost associated with.
Thank you.
So, with that, we'll leave it open to questions, opportunity to discuss anything that we haven't touched on already, or to dive back into something that Planning Commission doesn't feel like we've fully addressed.
Commissioners? Commissioner Rosenberg.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make sure, and maybe I'm picking up on it now based on what you just said. The solar panels could be in lieu of any tree canopy, but Washington County has decided to make a 30% tree canopy our standard?
I, I, it, I agree. It can be a little confusing, because there are some, there are limited moving parts to it. The requirements, the options, if you will, you are, you're, I'll try and break this down. Option one would be to do a 40% tree canopy. Option two would be 30% tree canopy and solar panels. And the solar panels would have to meet a certain generating capacity. Option three would be 30% tree canopy and a fee-in lieu. So, options two and three both have a minimum tree canopy requirement. It's not as high as option one, but there are additional requirements for lower tree canopy requirement.
And that's trickling down from the state?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, this, you were commenting on the solar panels being priced out. Is that just, we don't anticipate anyone will take that option?
It's, I mean, it's certainly possible. I think when we presented this information at the last work session, some of the feedback that we heard was that the solar pan, like, there were concerns about the increased costs associated with these things. $1,500 for a fee-in lieu, $1,500 per space as a fee-in lieu can add up pretty fast. At that time, we weren't perfectly clear on what the cost of solar panels would be during the last work session, but hearing the concerns that we heard about the costs associated with those things, we looked into it a little bit, and determined that depending on where the market prices are, it'll add about $1,200 per parking space to meet that solar panel requirement. And that would be per parking space, and that would be in addition to meeting the 30% tree canopy requirement. So, those three options relative to each other, so using, because these would be for half-acre parking lot sizes. So, if we're saying a parking lot with 50 spaces hypothetically, you would either have to meet your 30% tree canopy requirement, which, depending on your tree size, would be about, what, seven to eight fairly large trees? And then you would have to do for 50 parking spaces at 1,500. And then you would have to do for 50 parking spaces at $1,500 or $1,200 each, you know, that's several, tens, that's tens of thousands of dollars on top of that. Versus if you were to go from a 30% tree canopy requirement to a 40% tree canopy requirement, you would need to plant another two to three trees in this instance, and tree costs are about $600 per tree. So the, the relative cost between those options is pretty, pretty, pretty extreme, right? You can add another couple thousand dollars to plant any number of trees depending on this parking lot size, or you would do, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to do a fee-in lieu or solar panel on top of.
Okay. So we're going to leave the solar panels in as an option, recognizing that very few will?
We're not recommending the solar panels.
Okay. We're not even recommending to incorporate that in Washington County?
Yes.
Because we assume it's going to be priced out?
Well, so again, the feedback that we heard was we don't want to do anything that would increase the costs, recognizing that the, these would be options, but that was something that we've incorporated, or that's how we've, that's how we've incorporated the feedback that we've heard. If that's something that you feel differently on, then this is an opportunity where we can, well, we, we, we can't just make, I mean, so, and if, if the Planning Commission wants to make that change, it's certainly within its right to do so, or, or make a recommendation to make that change. So at the Planning Commission hearing, you could say, you could say we would recommend this be adopted, we would recommend the Board of Commissioners would adopt this with this modification, and the Board of Commissioners would take that into consideration and would direct the planning staff to either incorporate it or not. And if they choose to do so, then we would engross it and make that change.
Got it. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I'm thinking we might need a break.
That's what I was going to ask, if you'd like to think that.
Yes. So I'm proposing a five-minute break. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we'll see you in five minutes.
It might be worth a reminder.
She didn't push it. Yes, okay.
You don't need to do it like in the public meeting, but it might?
No, I'll tell her. Yeah, thank you for that.
Thanks.
All right. It doesn't work in five. Yeah.
Our next agenda item is work session on ordinances numbers 901 and 902.
Thank you, Chair Lockwood, and Commissioners. Teresa Cherniack, Principal Planner with Community Planning. I'm going to start off the presentation, and then Michelle Miller, Project Manager, will do the majority of it, and then we'll have Kathy Corliss, our consultant. I guess they'll each do about half of it. So it's, this is a pretty long presentation. Our hope is that maybe we can go through it and hold questions until the end. So if you do have questions along the way, maybe write those down so you don't, don't lose those ideas. This is the third in a series of work sessions with the Planning Commission preparing for the upcoming hearings. Those will start at your next meeting, July 24th, for ordinance numbers 901 and 902. The ordinances relating to the county's Significant Natural Resource Regulations in Support of Statewide Planning Goal and Metro's Title 13. What we hope to do this afternoon is give you more of an overview and orientation on the different materials that you're going to see in your packet, which you'll receive next week. And then the, you did receive part of this already, the two ordinances, the actual ordinance language. So we'll support, or we'll focus more on the supporting materials, which you will see next week, and the staff report. This is a bit of a shift from what we had talked about last time, where we said we would focus more on the content of the ordinances. What we realized is that we hadn't really talked about the two pretty critical background reports that we will be giving you, so we wanted to provide more information about those. Those are the result of all the work that we've been doing and the three, the three steps we've been working on. Those are the inventory report and Goal Five report. So that's our objective for today. With the, today's presentation, we wanted to start with a bit of the hierarchy of planning in Oregon to kind of get you properly oriented to how, what we're doing fits in with state and metro. We'll talk about the, the three different steps that we've been working on and what, what the outcomes or the deliverables were from those. And then we'll dive into the Habitat Inventory Report, which was step one, the Draft Goal Five Report, which was step two, and then the Policies and Regulations, we'll talk about just a little bit, that was step three. And then we should have time for questions. So the planning hierarchy for the work we're doing, and this is not, not, this is the, the hierarchy for all planning, this is focused just on the Significant Natural Resources work, but it's this sort of hierarchy for, for other things that we do. So the state requirements always come on top, that's what gives us our guidance for what we're supposed to do. Goal Five is the statewide planning goal, and then there are rules that were developed to implement Goal Five. That's the Significant Natural Resources goal. Then below that is Metro. So Metro is our regional government. It develops requirements for all of the metro jurisdictions, so all the cities within the three counties, Multnomah, Clackamas, and Washington, and then the counties themselves. So under the natural resource umbrella, Title 13 of their Urban Growth Management Functional Plan is where they have the requirements for natural resources. And there's an interplay between the state requirements and Metro's requirements. The state lays out a lot of what needs to happen as far as process, but then they allow some of that to be decided by Metro. So you'll hear a bit more in the, the presentation about that, how, how that works in our process. And then all of that funnels down to what the county has to do in its plan documents. So the three documents that we are changing, or three types of documents we are changing through this to implement the state and metro requirements are our Comprehensive Framework Plan for the urban area, that's the, the broad policy document, it has, I think, 42 policies that guide growth and development in the county, but it's at a, it's at a high level, a policy level. Those policies are implemented then both through the community plans and then through the Community Development Code. So the community plans are, I think we have 12 of them, they are specific to each community area, so Cedar Hills, Cedar Mill has one, Bethany, some of the other ones, Sunset West. So we have a number of them. And those are still policy documents, but get a little more detailed on what the community would like to see in their area, and there are design elements in there as well. And then the Community Development Code gets down to the level of how we regulate development and the, the standards and regulations that are applied when someone proposes development. So we are proposing changes to all of those documents through these two ordinances. The other little bit to the side there is the Resource Document, that's actually Volume One of our comprehensive plan, and it includes all the background documents that were used to first develop the plan. And since we are amending our natural resource regulations, we are replacing the parts of that resource document that have to do with natural resources. So all of that, it's kind of the, the whole umbrella of what we're doing there. You've seen this little graphic to the left before the different steps, so step one, inventory, step two, analysis, and step three, developing the policies and regulations. This graphic shows what is coming out of each of those steps, what documents. So the step one, inventory stage, the deliverable there was a Habitat Inventory Report. That report we'll be talking about this afternoon, and you will see that next week with your staff report. That one will become part of the comprehensive plan in the Resource Document, so that's one of those background documents. Those don't get adopted by ordinance, they get adopted by resolution and order, so that's why they weren't filed a couple of weeks ago. Step two, the analysis part, that's the evaluation of the conflicting uses there, there might be with the natural resources. What is coming out of that step is the Goal Five Report, which includes the Title 13, Metro Title 13 compliance, and that also will become part of the Resource Document. And then finally, step three is the developing the policies and regulations. So that's the part that is in our ordinances. Those are the changes to the Comprehensive Framework Plan, the changes to the community plans, both the text and maps, and then changes to the Community Development Code. So we wanted to give this as a sort of framework so you understand when you see those documents next week where they fit in the whole process. And with that, I will turn it over to Michelle.
Okay. All right. So now we're going to move on to the Habitat Inventory Report. You're going to be seeing the draft Habitat Inventory Report, it will be available soon, and it will be part of the packet that you'll get with the staff report and, a week from So about two years ago this month, the Board directed an update to the county's 40-year-old wildlife habitat inventory for the urban unincorporated area. There had been interest over the years about providing greater protections for wildlife habitat, and we had had the remand of Ordnance 869, which was about the Significant Natural Resources Code changes. So they directed staff to hire a consultant team to help us evaluate the county's wildlife habitat mapping with the limited scope of using Metro's more recent 2000 Regionally Significant Fish and Wildlife Inventory Map as a starting point to develop a methodology to determine the natural resources that were considered significant in the urban area. So we hired a MIG consultant, Kathy's here today, you met her last week, who partnered with Ethan Rosenthal of David Evans and Associates, he's an ecologist with many years of experience, to help prepare this Habitat Inventory Report that we are using to update our Significant Natural Resources maps to address Goal Five and meet Title 13 requirements. The report, oops, sorry.
So step one, inventory, step two, analysis, and step three, developing the policies and regulations. This graphic shows what is coming out of each of those steps, what documents. So the step one, inventory stage, the deliverable there was a Habitat Inventory Report. That report we'll be talking about this afternoon, and you will see that next week with your staff report. That one will become part of the Comprehensive Plan in the Resource Document. So that's one of those background documents. Those don't get adopted by ordinance, they get adopted by resolution and order. So that's why they weren't filed a couple of weeks ago. Step two, the analysis part, that's the evaluation of the conflicting uses there, there might be with the natural resources. What is coming out of that step is the Goal Five Report, which includes the Title 13, Metro Title 13 compliance. And that also will become part of the Resource Document. And then finally, step three is the developing the policies and regulations. So that's the part that is in our ordinances. Those are the changes to the Comprehensive Framework Plan, the changes to the community plans, both the text and maps, and then changes to the Community Development Code. So we wanted to give this as a sort of framework, so you understand when you see those documents next week, where they fit in the whole process. And with that, I will turn it over to Michelle.
All right, so now we're going to move on to the Habitat Inventory Report. You're going to be seeing the draft Habitat Inventory Report. It will be available soon, and it will be part of the packet that you'll get with the staff report and, a week from today. So about two years ago this month, the board directed an update to the county's 40-year-old Wildlife Habitat Inventory for the urban unincorporated area. There had been interest over the years about providing greater protections for wildlife habitat, and we had had the remand of Ordinance 869, which was about the Significant Natural Resources code changes. So they directed staff to hire a consultant team to help us evaluate the county's wildlife habitat mapping with the limited scope of using Metro's more recent 2000 Regionally Significant Fish and Wildlife Inventory Map as a starting point to develop a methodology to determine the natural resources that were considered significant in the urban area. So we hired a MIG consultant, Kathy's here today, you met her last week, who partnered with Ethan Rosenthal of David Evans and Associates. He's an ecologist with many years of experience to help prepare this Habitat Inventory Report that we are using to update our Significant Natural Resources maps to address Goal Five and meet Title 13 requirements. The report, oops, sorry. The report that you'll be reviewing will include a detailed methodology used for consolidating Metro and the county inventories to identify the resources that were considered significant. And I spoke a little bit about that at our last work session that we had. The report also includes incorporation of the inventories from cities who adopt, who may have adopted more recent Goal Five inventory work, or as well as inventories that the county did for areas like North Bethany and the Bonnie Slope West area. So we didn't do any further updates to those inventories through this process. And then the draft report also includes some tables with the amount of inventoried resources that were prior to, prior to conducting the update, as well as the tables that show the significant habitat by, by resource category as well that, that has come through this process. So at the last meeting, there was an interest in what areas had been added through this process, especially specifically for upland wildlife habitat. So what has changed? We thought we'd show the progression of getting the updated maps you'll see in the inventory report and that are highlighted in the community plans as well. So this is an example of the Bethany area of what process, what the process kind of looked like over time to kind of scale out for the entire urban area. It was really hard to show at a urban county level where the resources were located. And this was a little bit easier. So here's the county's original mapping for this area. To orient you, we're talking, well, the area we're talking about, on the left side of your screen is, would, would run 185th. And then on the right side of your screen is Bethany Boulevard. The two creeks are, Rock Creek up at the, the north creek is Rock Creek. And the other blue areas are Bronson Creek. You can see the legend on the right tells you the colors and the habitat types that we have. We had water areas and wetlands, water areas and wetlands that also included fish and wildlife habitat, as well as the dark green wildlife habitat. So those were all the original mapping from the 1980s included there. This map shows the consolidated areas when we combined the metro and the county resources together. So we faded out the, the county's original mapping and made the metro mapping kind of pop more on the top with the, the areas that would be different from the upland wildlife habitat in orange and yellow. So that's the conglomeration of the consolidated, the consolidated maps. And you can see the areas of overlap with the county, the county wildlife resources in the dark green color and any new areas of upland wildlife habitat in orange and yellow for the same area. And you can kind of see the difference in the shift of the county's water resources. This one, this one shows the resulting updated Significant Natural Resources mapped after we replaced the county's water and wetlands areas with the Metro's areas. And then we included the upland wildlife habitat that met that criteria for determining significance. Remember that we weren't starting from scratch with our inventory. We were consolidating two existing inventories and, and applying a methodology that you'll see in the report for how we got to these, identifying these areas as significant. So the upland wildlife habitat areas shown in dark green are the areas that were on the original county mapping done in the 1980s. Any new areas that were determined to be significant from the metro inventories are in orange and yellow. And then the metro resources for riparian habitat are shown in blue. And so this is another way of, of saying that same thing. We took the water areas and wetlands of the, of the county's resources in the wildlife and the metro riparian class one and two, and combined them into our new category that will show on the maps that you might have seen on the community plans called riparian wildlife habitat. And this was incorporating the class one and two riparian wildlife habitat. And in some circumstances, the wildlife habitat may have been mapped by the county as wildlife habitat, but it, in actuality, was the riparian habitat. We learned with more recent information and using GIS, we determined that it was the riparian habitat. So we classified it in that category. And for wildlife habitat, we did more of a consolidation and evaluated both of these categories as a whole in looking at, looking through the methodology to get the final category of upland wildlife habitat. And here's us, some of the draft inventory results. And I'm also saying that this is still draft because often the, there's annexations that occur or different, different factors that would kind of modify and change these numbers as, as the county changes. So we have 3,173 acres of riparian wildlife habitat in the urban unincorporated area, along with 1,094 acres of upland wildlife habitat to get to our total there. And a little bit of context, the county urban unincorporated acreage is around 30,000 acres. So this next slide shows some of the figures based on when the area came into the urban growth boundary. As a, as a reminder, this is because there's different metro requirements for areas that were added to the urban growth boundary after 2005, which was the time that the Metro Title 13 was adopted. And the blue areas are the areas that are, that predated that, that were here inside the urban growth boundary before 2005. And the orange areas are areas that have been added since then. And also to note that even though an area might have been added to the urban growth boundary before 2005, there, the areas around the fringes or the borders may be, likely be planned by a city and we've, and development is limited in those areas. It's future development. So, or it might have been inventories that were prepared by a local jurisdiction as well. So here's the draft results for the upland wildlife habitat areas. We have remaining county-mapped wildlife habitat that included areas that overlapped with the county's original and Metro's upland wildlife habitat of 366 acres. Areas that were upland wildlife habitat that are new, new areas from the metro inventory, and that's 330 acres. So that gives us 696 acres that are in those blue areas from, from the previous slide. And the upland wildlife habitat in post-2005 UGB expansion areas are 398. And, and from earlier discussions, and Kathy's going to talk a little bit more about that in the ESEE, per Title Night, Title 13, we're required to have protections for upland wildlife habitat. And she'll talk a little bit more about what that, what that means further in the, in our discussion. So I had some examples, we, oh, okay, we've cut them, great. Okay, so now I'll turn it over to Kathy. And Kathy, if you just want to say next slide and, and I'll, and I'll run the presentation for you.
Thank you, Michelle. Right, so again, we'll be talking on, about step two, the analysis, and specifically the, the goal, what we call the Goal Five Report, which includes Title 13 compliance as well as the ESEE analysis. Next slide. Got duplicates there, all right.
And Kathy, if there's any way you could speak a little bit louder or closer, that'd be great, thanks.
Is that better? And I'll speak up?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And I'm going to go through these quickly because I know that we're running a little late. So, and I won't dwell on this, except to say that as Teresa pointed out, there's a hierarchy and that for what we would call Metro, Metro Regionally Significant Resources, they, we need to demonstrate substantial compliance with Title 13. For other resources that Washington County determines to be significant, we're going to follow the standard Goal Five process, which includes the ESEE analysis. I'll talk about the Title 13 resources first, and then we'll talk about the Goal Five process. And again, both of those are covered in the Goal Five Report. Next slide. So, and I think we've talked about this before, but just to reiterate, Goal Five itself says that a, if a, if a regional, Metro has identified a regional resource, that the local government follows the functional plan, in this case, the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan for that regional resource, rather than the requirements of this division, which is why we don't necessarily need to do an ESEE analysis for things that are subject to the functional plan. So that's why they're subject to Title 13 and not the standard process. Next slide. Okay, so of the regionally significant resources in the UUA that are required to be protected in accordance with Title 13, we've estimated about 3,041 acres, which is almost all of the riparian wildlife habitat, and the 398 acres of upland wildlife habitat that is in the new UGB areas primarily. So that's the, and that represents about 36% of all the upland wildlife habitat on the county's inventory. So those two sets of habitat need to be, you need to demonstrate substantial compliance with Title 13. So next slide. So the, obviously, county is proposing to update maps and regulations that will impact those regionally significant resources. There is, and we needed to, for riparian, we needed to demonstrate that the new standards were clear and objective. You'll also see that the standards requirements for regionally significant upland wildlife habitat in the draft amendments in Section 422 are somewhat different and somewhat, one would say stricter than for other upland habitat, also a reflection of the fact that they're subject to Title 13. So we've been coordinating very closely with Metro staff. You'll find findings in that Goal Five Report, speaking to substantial compliance with Title 13. And that's, I think that covers that slide, keep moving. So we have another set of resources that are, resources that are not subject to Title 13. So for the sake of argument, we'll call those locally significant resources. Although many of them were initially identified as significant resources by Metro, Metro did not make them, did not reach a conclusion that required protection. And so in order to do that, we are going through the standard EC process, and that is allowed by Title 13. So what is an EC? Very simply, it is a look at the economic, social, environmental, and energy consequences of allowing, limiting, or prohibiting conflicting uses within a resource and the impact. And so the, and we'll just talk a little bit about what that means because when you start to read the Goal Five Report, you're going to see a fairly complicated set of tables. And I want to make sure that you have some orientation to those before you tackle it. Next slide. So again, we're looking for what's called sometimes an ALP decision, right? So based on the ESEE analysis, the recommendation is going to be whether to allow, limit, or prohibit identified uses that could conflict with significant resource sites. We've identified, they're oftentimes called conflicting uses. Those can be groups of uses. In Washington County, in our Goal Five Report, we have, I think, seven categories? No, six categories. Sorry, I should know that. And so again, next slide, I'll talk a little bit more about that. So given that, right, we have three scenarios, we have four types of consequences, we have six conflicting use categories, we have three possible outcomes. So it's a really multifaceted analysis. In order to be thorough, you want to look at it on both sides, the positive and the negative consequences of doing any one of those things. So it gets really complicated really fast, and that's why a systematic approach is helpful. How we, next slide. So what you'll see in the Goal Five Report, for each of the three scenarios, allowing, limiting, or prohibiting, you'll find five tables for each of those. So there'll be the economic consequences of allowing conflicting uses, the economic consequences of limiting conflicting uses, the economic consequences of prohibiting the conflicting uses. And again, that's each of those six conflicting use categories. So you'll see that a series of tables for each of the scenarios or, for like allowing, limiting, and prohibiting, you'll have five tables each. They, each one of those sections concludes with a summary of the consequences. So based on a kind of a plus minus, it's a plus one zero, minus one scale that we're using to indicate whether it's generally supportive or not. That's not meant to imply that there is a quantitative analysis, it is a qualitative analysis. We just use the points to help us keep track of the general direction that the balance is tilting, shall we say. So all that comes together in a final summary table. And the overall goal is to get the strongest positive outcome. So again, the points are there, but really just to help us keep track of the balance. Next slide. So here's an example, just one section of one table. So this is, would be from Table A1, the economic consequences of allowing conflicting uses. We have high intensity urban, that is one of our conflicting use categories. We have positive economic consequences of allowing those activities in, and again, we're talking about activities in those limited, in the areas that are subject to the EC, which is the upland habitat, right? So we have upland habitat areas, which is, you know, not the riparian because those are subject to Title 13, but the upland areas. What would be the positive consequences of, economic consequences of allowing high intensity urban development? What would be the negative economic consequences? And on balance, that net effect on balance, where do we think that lands? And again, so I don't want to imply that there is a, it's not a mathematical equation. It's looking at those factors. This is a policy, this is an exercise in policy for you all to think about, to, to weigh in on, to say, yes, I disagree or I agree, those kinds of things. That's what this document is helping us understand, is what are those trade-offs? And this is, we heard a lot from the community, we heard a lot from our tech, we heard from others, and that really informed how we put this together and the information that's included in here. Next slide. So all, as I said, all of this comes together ultimately in an ESE summary table. So this is the cumulative scores from the five summary tables. And it comes together, and then you're looking, one looks at that and says, well, okay, what is our best? We got the best outcome for high intensity urban with an allow decision. It was meh, on limit, and not very good on prohibit. And that's because there's a lot of jobs and housing benefit in compact urban form that come from high intensity urban, that, that conflicting use category. So the outcome there is a, is an allow. And so this table pulls that all together, and we end up with a recommendation or outcome of an allow for high intensity urban. Other urban, which is mostly residential zones primarily, and some institutional, gets a lightly limit. Again, you know, it was, it was solidly in the limit category, but it was balanced. And similarly with future or non or slash future urban. And that's going to be some of the urban holding, or the more rural residential holding zones that are on land that has not, while it's in the urban growth boundary, it hasn't had urban zoning yet. Parks and open space, utilities and transportation, those can occur in any of the land use districts, but they have distinctive characteristics. And so you'll see that those were pulled out as separate conflicting use categories. And those each got an allow. And next slide, the next slide talks a little bit about why. So where conflicting uses are allowed, again, I mentioned high intensity urban. The import, there's, it's relatively few acres, for one thing. And those acres provide an opportunity for compact urban development and housing and jobs, right? Parks and open space, as we were looking at what the content and what we heard and the importance, the social, especially the social impacts of allowing conflicting uses. Again, also building benefits for parks by allowing a balance of uses there. It appeared to have an overall benefit to allow that conflicting use. That conflicting use also does in itself protect natural resources, so there is that as well. And then utilities and transportation. And then utilities and transportation facilities, thinking about allowing those in. Again, upland habitat areas. It was a question of would we, if you prohibit, you're saying you're going to realign a road. Or realign utility line to avoid that polygon of that habitat. And efficient utility and transportation facility design, it has a lot of environmental benefits. Good connectivity can reduce vehicle miles traveled, good connectivity can improve pedestrian and cyclist. Bicycleist activity, so forth. So balancing those, that's the kind of discussion you'll see in the E S E E tables. That's that balancing again, what are those trade-offs? How do we think about that? Okay, so that, the recommendation there was allow, what does that mean in the code? How does that? Get reflected in the draft ordinances that you've seen? Next slide. So the simplest thing for the upland wildlife habitat in the high intensity urban. Was to, we have a regulatory map that is different than the inventory map. And so the solution there was to remove upland wildlife habitat where it overlapped with high intensity urban land uses. That solution doesn't really work super well for other uses that hadn't allow. So that would be public parks and open space, utility facilities, public transportation facilities. So the solution there to respond to that allow recommendation was to include exceptions. To the upland habitat, not, again, not to riparian, to the upland wildlife habitat. For those facilities. Next slide. And so we had other uses where the conflicting uses were lightly limit. You'll see that. There's recommendations in the report that talk about protecting mature native trees. We, again, we were hearing from the community about the importance of certain species. And also, of course, we knew we needed to clear an objective path. But we also heard the need for flexibility and mitigation to recognize variations in site conditions. We also heard the need to balance that those lands. Also provide important housing, in particular, again, other urban has a lot of, that's a lot of residential zoning. That those provide an important social benefit in providing housing and economic. And so finding ways to balance that. So you'll, next slide. So how does that get responded to in the ordinances? There's clear and objective standards for tree redemption replacement. They focus on protecting mature native trees. Larger than six inches D B H. We have additional incentives to protect. White oak, Willamette Valley ponderous pine, a drone, and also trees within a hundred feet of a riparian habitat. But the development is allowed within upland habitat areas if you're following that clear and objective path. You can develop on that land. It is not a prohibit. It is a lightly limit. So it's protecting fifty percent of the tree points, which means that, you know, that doesn't necessarily equate to fifty percent of the land. Right? That could mean just preserving some of the really large mature trees and still being able to develop a substantial portion of that area. So again, that's a lightly limit that's finding a way to express that in the, in the regulations. Because we heard about not every, that's not going to work for every site, or you know, what about other situations? Section four twenty-two, the draft includes two opportunities that are available to applicants if they choose them. One is to have follow the tree canopy assessment and protection requirements. Other is the detailed environmental report requirement. Next slide. Okay, that was a whirlwind tour. I'll just quickly talk about the step three, this next slide. So these were the subject of our last work session, of course, and I think we had left off there. Hoping that you all would have time to look at that. I think it would be helpful if you have opportunities to ask us questions today. Especially questions that you would like us to go back and research and be ready to respond to when we are next in front of you. So if there's anything like that, if you have questions, I don't know that we have the ability to answer all of them today. But we would be interested in knowing if there are things we can look into. And again. I think you've seen these ordinances. We talked about them last time. We're here to answer questions or at least schedule questions. And next slide. All right, I'm going to hand this back over to Teresa or Michelle.
So this outlines our public hearing process that will begin on July twenty-fourth. It's an evening meeting. You'll, a week, at least a week from today, you'll be receiving the staff report. And we'll be setting that up as the first hearing. August twenty-first is the second planning commission hearing where we'll continue with responding to questions. That you might have also the, the public hearing process and testimony. And then if we need be, we have scheduled September fourth for the third planning commission hearing. And at that time, you'd be making a recommendation to the board of commissioners. Who will hold the first hearing on October first. So with that, I think we have time for some questions and. Turn it back over to Chair Lockwood. It's Commissioner Kaiser.
Thank you, Chair Lockwood. I just wanted to say thank you to staff for putting together the overlay map. That was very helpful for me. I think something that. Just puts a face on, on what, what we're talking about, especially even if it's just for one area, right? I mean, it was helpful just to look at it for the Bethany area. It could have been anywhere. So I appreciate staff doing that. I just wanted to say thank you for that.
I agree. Other Commissioner Monte Blanco.
How is high intensity urban defined?
Sounds like one for Kathy. Outlined in the habitat report. I mean, the. Kathy, do you want to go ahead or we can take it either way?
No, no, I, I was looking to see if I had a hidden slide that I could put up on the screen. To show that, let's see, do we have one?
I have it on one of the drafts. It includes. There is, I did add that to the one there. So that has the list of.
Yeah, no, no apologies. And that is a short definition of high intensity urban. So it includes. The high intensity urban, other urban, and future slash non-urban. All are land use district based. So in the goal five report. You'll see exactly which land use districts land in which categories. However, in general, it's the commercial industrial mixed use, high density transit oriented districts. So, and yeah, we could, I, give me a minute and I can actually. Find the table and share that with you if that's helpful, if others have questions about those.
It sounds like it'll be in the report that we read.
It will be in the report in a great deal of detail. So yeah. And it's interesting that, you know, we're, goal five allows jurisdictions to group. Conflicting uses based on their impacts and kind of, so you'll see tables that talk about the impacts of these. Land use districts kind of as a group and how they're maybe distinct, you know, how they have different impacts from say. Land uses in the other urban category.
And then, I think this relates, it, it talked about, one of the slides talked about like lightly limit versus limit. And can you help me understand, like, who is the person, is it the board of commissioners deciding, oh, here's the limit of this much? H I U for this area because it's decided it was upland and we have to keep it protected. Like, is that us? Who's deciding?
So the. The use categories are, H I U, for example, is fixed on the map. That is based on your land use districts. So that does not, that does not move. The question is. Whether or not on those, where those conflicting uses exist. Whether or not the positive or negative consequences of allowing, limiting, or prohibiting that use. Where it conflicts with the upland habitat, right? So it's, the question is, okay, well, if we were to allow high intensity on that land. Where it is currently has that designation, but it is also identified on the inventory map. As upland habitats. We have two things showing on that, in the, on that location. And so, and they, they conflict. You can't necessarily have upland habitat and high intensity urban on the same piece of land. What are the choices, right? What are the economic, social, energy, environmental benefits? Of allowing or not? And then the conclusion to limit, you know, obviously. From allow, which is like, okay, we're going to allow the conflicting use. In other words, we're not going to require. Protection of, or limitations on development based on that natural resource being there, right? So that's one choice, one end of the spectrum. Prohibit, obviously, a clear black and white. You may not do the conflicting use on that land. The natural resource takes precedent. In between there is limit. Limit is every shade of gray, right? So from strictly limit, where it's almost prohibit, but not quite, to something in the middle. To more lightly limit. In other words, the conflicting use is also very important and is also. Providing very, very important benefits to the community by way of land, jobs, housing. That kind of thing, right? So opportunities, but we also. See an interest in protecting some aspects as much as possible. Of this resource in these areas where there is this conflict. And so again, finding that balance is, is on you as a recommendation and then on the board of county commissioners to ultimately make the decision. This report helps you, kind of, it shows our work. It shows the thinking. It's like what we heard from the community. What we heard was important, how we understood that that balance, it's a draft because of that. So I think it is on, an opportunity for you all to see what was kind of, what were the trade-offs that were under consideration as we thought through. And, and their, and their end result is the draft that you see in the ordinances. Does that, does that help?
It does, yeah, for sure.
Thank you, Chair. Would you mind moving on to the next slide, slide twenty-six? So these are the categories, the high intensity urban, the other urban, and the different outcomes that we, that are being proposed for it. If we're pulling the high intensity urban out, even if it is a. Protected resource, we're pulling it out, what percentage was impacted by that? How much should we take back out using this criteria?
So, so I estimated, so again, this is, this is upland habitat. And again, we're talking not about the upland habitat that is in the new U G B areas. Then the areas that were added after the adoption of Title thirteen on December twenty-eighth, two thousand and five. So we're talking about lands that are in the, shall we say, older U G P, I guess at this point, they're both older, but. The pre two thousand and five U G B. So. I, my estimate was it was about thirty-two acres. There is a little bit of additional habitat that is in P C C Rock Creek. That was identified by Metro as a high value. Urban, like, for high value land use because of its contribution to. Education and so forth. So they, Metro, when they did their E S E E and identified. Their kind of balancing, they had called out certain facilities, port facilities, certain education facilities. Certain hospital campuses, they highlighted some of those. We've carried that forward. So you'll see that as well. So if you just looked at the high intensity urban zone, like land uses. It would be about thirty-two acres. So it's not very much, less than ten percent, I would say. Solidly less than ten percent of the, of the area. The bulk of the acreage that's affected is by far. Is in other urban and future non-urban, non, excuse me, non slash future urban. And by the way, I know that name is probably confusing because these are all lands in the urban growth boundary. But there, they've got zoning that is still kind of what we would not think of necessarily as urban zones, right? So that was, it's a little bit of a, of a misnomer. Apologies for that. We struggled with the name. But those two have the vast majority, those two categories have the vast majority of the acreage.
And the other urban, just to be super clear, that's all of the residential land use districts. Except for the three very high density transit oriented districts that are in the high intensity. So everything from our lowest density residential, five units per acre. Up to residential twenty-five plus and all of the districts, the residential districts in North Bethany. So everything residential plus a couple of other things are in the other urban.
Institutional.
Institutional is the other thing in there.
Other, other questions, commissioners? I have a few questions and they're. Pretty much on a different wavelength from what we've been talking about. They're based on reading the ordinances for today. I guess I wanted to start with ordinance nine oh two, which, when it talks about that rural area. And this would be on page thirty-one of thirty-one. And I just noticed there that in section four twenty-two. I guess it's point five. Four twenty-two dash twenty-two point five, middle of the page. Anyway, it's significant natural resource area outside the U G B. For any proposed use in a significant natural resource area, there should be a finding that the proposed use. Will not necessar, not, sorry, will not seriously interfere with the preservation of this. And wildlife areas and so on. So my question is. The language is unchanged. And I believe that for the urban unincorporated area, the language is changed, to be clear and objective. So I'm wondering why that difference?
So the, with the state law change, we are not required at this time to. To have clear and objective language for areas in, in the rural.
It was simply not required. Okay. That's kind of interesting.
So, so we've kind of kept that the same at, at this point. And we'll tackle that later.
Yeah, and that's. Development occurring in outside the U G B. Right, okay.
And that's a point to, that we'll make in the staff report really clearly is that. We're changing only the regulations that apply to the urban unincorporated area. Everything that applied to the rural area stays the same. And as such, is still under the old rules that didn't require the clear and objective standards. In the future, there was this change to state law. So at some point next year. Rural residential areas will be subject to clear and objective standards. So we will, we will need to address that. But at this time, they aren't. And there, there are other potential issues with the rural area. That we're going to need to tackle. And so we wanted to kind of leave those as they are and come back to that.
That makes sense to me that eventually they'll kind of coordinate as far as residential development. Couple others. I wondered about the root protection zone and how the one inch diameter translates to one foot of. Zone or how that standard was developed. That, that's actually on page twelve of. Ordinance nine oh two. Maybe, maybe Kathy knows what I'm talking about.
I, I do. May I answer that question, Michelle?
Oh, sure.
Okay, great. Yeah, great question. So that's actually not an uncommon. Way to calculate it based on our research, looking at other tree regulations from other jurisdictions. There are ways to do it. That one is the most clear and objective that I had seen. So you do see them where it's based on. So you do see them where it's based on like the drip line, or it's based on some other things. But to the measurement methodology for, like, for example, calculating what the drip line is or something, suddenly you start to get into some gray areas that require professional judgment and so forth. And so we did a lot of research, a lot of looking at other development codes that regulate trees for lots of different reasons. And that looked to be both clear and objective and to produce a reasonable outcome. But yes, if you have any, if you've heard concerns about that, then of course we're interested. But that's the recommendation.
Okay. So based on, when you, professional opinion would be people who know about plants and trees and what they need, okay. Thank you. Just a couple more here, one about the tree canopy preservation area. Was the rationale of establishing that to protect the riparian habitat? I mean, what's, what's the thinking behind having a tree canopy protection area?
So that, that tree canopy preservation is an option that applicant can use instead of the tree point requirement. And we're regulating the trees within the significant habitat area that are, that is outside of the riparian habitat area. But knowing that the closer you are to the riparian area, the, the more, the better the habitat is for the wildlife corridor in general. So there's kind of baked in the minimum canopy requirement is a percentage that allows a reduction for the, the size of the tree canopy area that's required of 25% versus standalone habitat area. But it does not count the riparian wildlife habitat area in that tree canopy requirement.
Yes, the idea there is that that's a bit of an incentive. You have to provide a little bit less of an area, but it's, it's better area because it's closer to the water and the, the other protected areas.
Okay, thank you. My last one is, this is again about the rural area, so maybe it's not really what you're addressing right now. But that one, I'm going to just refer back to that, so I'm page 27, I think. Raising livestock. That's exempt from fencing. In other words, the livestock can have access to the riparian area. And I just wondered why that was an exempt function. And maybe that's too specialized to deal with today, but.
Well, it's a, you can see it's, it's not new language, so it's a carryover from the exceptions that were included in the original inventory and, and how they perhaps did the ESE, that farming takes precedence over the preservation of the habitat to allow that exception. So that's kind of a, an example of how the ESE may have worked to provide an exception for, for that type of activity, that conflicting use.
But it might be something that would be addressed when you look at the rural area?
Perhaps.
About how long ago do you think this would have been drafted?
This would have been in the 1980s. It was part of our original community development code and our original Goal Five inventory and Goal Five program that was developed then. And it was for both the urban and the rural area.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is anything else come up for any commissioner in the meantime? I don't think so. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
And I think we are ready now for commissioner communications. If anyone has something they want to say to us? I don't see anybody. Then we are coming to the end of our, our agenda. And I, I just want, I've lost mine, so I want to make sure that I'm not skipping anything. Thank you. Okay. With no announcements, we're ready for adjournment. Without objection, we are adjourned.